Good evening and welcome to the October 26, 2022, meeting of the East Lansing Planning Commission. Mr. Menjor, would you please call roll?
I would be happy to. Chair Bowman.
Here.
Vice Chair Sullivan.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Wolf.
Here.
Commissioner Lapine will likely be with us soon. Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Hendricks will also likely be with us soon. Commissioner Boyd.
Here.
Commissioner Denault.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. You have in your packets a copy of the agenda for this evening's meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve that agenda.
So moved.
Second. That's been moved by Commissioner Denault and seconded by Commissioner Wolf. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, let's have a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, that motion carries. We also have several minutes to approve, the first being the Planning Commission meeting of September 14, 2022. I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
A vote?
Support.
That's been moved by Vice Chair Sullivan and seconded by Commissioner Williams. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, that motion carries. We also have a work session from September 22, 2022. The minutes for that meeting, I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes as well. So moved.
Support.
That's been moved by Commissioner Wolf and seconded by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, that motion carries as well. And finally, the October 12 work session, October 12, 2022, minutes. I will entertain one final motion to approve those minutes as well. So moved. That's been moved by Commissioner Wagner.
Seconded by Commissioner Boyd.
Appreciate everybody taking an opportunity. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. And those opposed, that motion carries. We do have one committee, but I don't believe you've met yet, the Community Development Block Grant. I'm sort of representative on that committee, so we'll wait to hear from you in December or probably January. Moving us on to item three, staff reports. Mr. Menzner.
Good evening. The only report I really have, there's nothing to report out of council in terms of commission items that have been at council. I would remind, I guess, the commissioners here and anyone in the audience or watching at home, that Planning Commission meets only once in November and in December, as opposed to the typical two-meeting schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Menzner? All right then. On to item four, commissioner announcements. And that'll move us on to item five, communications from citizens. We did receive a number of written communications regarding the Valley Court Park public hearing, which will be later on our agenda. No? I thought I heard somebody raising a...
No.
Thank you. All right. Thanks. Thanks. And no other written communication, but this would be the time in our meeting when we invite citizens or members of the public to come forward and make a comment on items that are on our agenda. We typically ask that if you're going to make comments on either of our two public hearings this evening, one regarding Valley Court Park, and one recalling the property at 2040 Merit, that you hold those comments until those items are up on our agenda at the appropriate time in the meeting. We typically ask that if you are going to comment on those at that time, that you fill out a card either now or before you speak, so that we can get information regarding how to spell your name and the topic that you'd like to talk about. So I'll ask once again if there's anybody in the public that would like to come forward and make comments on items that are on our agenda or just need to be brought to the Planning Commission's attention, now would be the time to come forward. Very well. That will move us on to item 6.1, our first public hearing of the evening. This is the consideration of a site plan to construct a pavilion and other site improvements at Valley Court Park, which address is 300 Valley Court. Mr. Menzner. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Oh, thanks, Rebecca. I appreciate your keeping me honest. If you would, please ask that person to...
Mr. Harry Hill, the phone is open and ready for you to speak if you have something to say.
It looks like he hung up.
Disappeared.
Okay, we're just disconnected. And is, was that the only person on the queue then?
Yes, that was the last person.
Thanks. That's returned back to public hearing, item 6.1. Mr. Menzner.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. So my name's Peter Menzner. I'm the Planning and Zoning Administrator for the city, here tonight to explain a little background information about the Valley Court project. And one member of a project team has been working on this at the city, so you may hear from other members of our team tonight. We have a couple consultants. We have our Parks Director of Parks and Recreation, Catherine DeChambeau, and our Director of Planning and Development, and our Deputy City Manager, Tom Fierbach, here in the room tonight. So this project is a while coming that's, it really kind of stems from a grant that the city received through the MEDC. We're going through the site plan process because that is the process that the city uses to vet projects and to get public input. One thing I want to note very quickly, everything that I'm going to talk about tonight is in the meeting packet for the Planning Commission. So if you haven't been to a Planning Commission meeting before, or if you're wondering what some of the things that I'm referring to this evening, you can find them on the homepage of the city website under, I think, Meetings, right on the homepage, and that you'll navigate to the calendar for tonight and find the Planning Commission packet for this evening. There's also a website that the city has established. It's cityvslancing.com/pavilion. We're using that as kind of a resource center for this pavilion project. So there you will see a variety of things, but you'll see the concept plans I'll reference numerous times this evening. You'll see in a portal to provide input on the project, and other application, like for example, the application to the Historic District Commission that this project will be going through. And then anything else as we go through this project over the next couple of months, that's going to be your place to land to find that information. That being said, so tonight is the public hearing for the Valley Court Park. This project is the installation of a pavilion, most of all, the construction of a pavilion, but also other site improvements at the park. So there's a staff memorandum that I'm reading from this evening that kind of provides an overview and a summary of everything that's going in the park. But right now, I guess I want to really quickly note that this is a conceptual plan, and you'll note in the, in the plans when you do look at them. We're calling it kind of the final concept plan, but it's not final in the sense that this is still very much part of the public process. So we're using the site plan process. I mentioned the Historic District Commission. Ultimately, the site plan will go to City Council. We have, I mentioned before, we have this input, I guess, relay center to share thoughts on this. So the plans are not final. That being said, the general, the general components of it and being the pavilion, relocated playground, and some of the paving, crosswalk over to Evergreen, public art, green infrastructure, and kind of the outdoor seating is all elements of the plan that we're, we're planning on being a part of the plan as it goes throughout this process. So there may be tweaks along the way, but that's the general kind of scope of this project. Also included in the project is the rehabilitation of the BWL building. So it was a Board of Water and Light transfer station that was, what I understand, it was relocated to the site years ago from another location in that general area. The entire site is within a historic district. So what that means is ultimately this project will also need, in addition to the site plan approval, will also need a historic, a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic District Commission. So that meeting is scheduled in early November. But the rehabilitation of that BWL building, there's really just minor upgrades to the building planned, and really, at the end of the day, it's to make it watertight and weathered tight so that it can be used for storage. This is phase one of what could be a much, you know, larger park improvement project. So as it, specifically as it relates to BWL, the idea is to get that building just tight so that it can be used now. There may be another phase in the future where other improvements could be made to it so that it could be utilized for a public space, but right now, we just want to get it kind of in working order so that it's safe and dry. So the Valley Court site that we're looking at is about four and a half acres. It's Zone C, which is a community facilities district, and you'll see other city facilities in that same district, schools, other municipal buildings. So as I know, this project's conceptual in nature. This is the process by which the public shares input on, on these kinds of projects. So not only is it for the Planning Commission, City Council, but also members of the public to incorporate, to share comments, and ultimately, as this project goes through the system, those ideas and concepts may be added to the plan either in this phase or in a future phase. But it's really the opportunity for everyone to think hard about how this site's going to function in the future, and that it incorporates the elements that are important for really the long-term viability of the site. Right now, hopefully, members of the Planning Commission, members of the public have had a chance to go out to Valley Court Park. It's the home of the city's farmers market, but it's really a multi-use space that's being used for a variety of things, event space, there's a basketball court on the site, there's parking around the site, there's tennis courts, playground, there's some public art, there's seating areas. So it's used for a variety of community activities right now, and envisioned really to do the same plus more in the future. The site plan process tonight starts, it starts with this public hearing tonight, the Planning Commission. What the Planning Commission, their process is a public hearing tonight, so we're talking in broad terms about the project, we're just talking about the scope. You'll have a chance to share comments on the project in person tonight, certainly after this meeting, via online or written emails, or however you want to submit those. At the Commission's next meeting in November, there'll be additional opportunities for comment, and what the Planning Commission will likely do at that point is make a recommendation on the project. So from there, it moves on to City Council. So you'll see an item on the City Council to schedule a public hearing, and the City Council will ultimately hold a public hearing on the site plan. And their typical process is consider, holding the public hearing on the, on one evening, and then that same evening, making a decision on the project. Obviously, this plan is conceptual, and there are things that may or may not change as kind of as this moves through the system. So it's somewhat looser schedule, we're tentatively eyeing December 6 for public hearing with council, but again, after this meeting and after consideration of the comments from the public, that timeline could shift slightly. What is the site plan? The site plan ultimately will grant a one-year approval. So the project must commence within that one year, and a one-year extension is possible if the Planning Commission, if the city seeks one extension, if the Planning Commission grants an extension, a one-year extension. So there's, let's see here, some of the surrounding property, some of the surrounding land uses in this area are, there's multifamily housing, there's commercial along Grand River, there's a fraternity or sorority house to the north, and there's a neighborhood to the north. We have some maps in the staff memo that detail that. Future land use map identifies the spaces parks, schools, open space, so that is certainly the intended future use of the site. I want to talk a little bit about parking. I have a breakdown kind of the existing parking and what may be used in the future. And really, what it equals out to is a net gain of approximately 21 spaces. If the plan, if the concept plan is implemented as is, that would be about what it is. So there's 97 spaces serving the park, and really, by serving, I mean, they're available to park in and go, go to, to the park and enjoy the park. So those are public spaces, so public paid spaces at metered spots, or there are some spaces for use by the Valley Court Community Center. So 29 of those are for Valley Court, 68 spots in Lot 13. So Lot 13 is a public parking lot. It's linear in nature, it's on the north side of Valley Court Drive, just on the south side of the park, and it's used for the park, it's used for some of the adjacent businesses south of Valley Court, for example, Crunchies, and some other businesses in that area. The proposed plan, or the plan as proposed right now, and again, it's a concept plan, adds 52 spaces. So there's 24 kind of pull-in vendor spaces for use under the pavilion. So as is typical at most farmer markets that you see, the, their parking spaces for the vendors to actually pull in and kind of from the exterior and then sell their wares to the interior of the space. And then there are 15 new spaces to the west of the pavilion. On the concept plan, you'll see those are identified for use by food trucks, but those, when food trucks are not there, could be used by market attendees. And then there are 13 new spaces east of the pavilion, and that could, those could be used for market attendees. We haven't, there certainly have been conversations about the use of the parking spaces other times when the market's not in use that hasn't been finalized yet, but it's certainly going to be input from the Commission and from the public will provide some valuable guidance on that. So what I calculate is approximately a net gain of 21 spaces. There are a couple spaces where their parking would be lost, so the 17 spaces that are kind of right now, there's a small parking area adjacent to the basketball court that's to the west of where this proposed pavilion is located. And then there are 14 spaces on Valley Court in Lot 11. If you see the concept plan, there's a bump out proposed to facilitate that crossing at Evergreen, and there's some landscaping there. So that would be, and this is an estimate, about 14 spaces will be lost in Lot 11 there. So like I said, approximately a net gain of 21 spaces if the plan is installed as the concept plan shows. So the Planning Commission and Council, when they consider a site plan, there are five areas, really standards of review that they'll use in considering it. And it's all based on, I'm going to run through them really quickly. It's general site conditions, so it's, the site's designed and developed to kind of provide a logical relationship between the elements in the area. There's natural features, so that's ensuring that the site's designed and developed to minimize disruption or loss of natural features. Traffic access, so that's ensuring that the site is designed and developed to provide safe and efficient access for all forms of travel, so motor vehicles, pedestrians, bicycles. Utilizing public, utilities and public services, that is to ensure that the site is designed and developed to facilitate efficient provision and maintenance of adequate public services. We don't, there is a survey in the, in the materials that provided in the meeting packet tonight. You'll see it has existing utilities. We did get some feedback that I'll share with the Commission at the next meeting from our engineering department, the, some feedback on that. So we don't have that tonight, but I'll give that for you at the next meeting. Environment, in the, sorry, one more, two more. Environmental protection, so that's, that the site is designed and developed to minimize the pollution of natural resources and protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And the sixth element is public art. So this, in this case, the city's, the city has a very robust public art program. The, in this case, the city is really exempt, essentially exempt, our, and this doesn't say that the city is exempt from its own public art, but it's, the money is all in the same bucket, I guess, for, and what am I saying it? But public art, there's public art in the, in the park now, and there's new public art proposed in the plan. So that's, that will go through its own process of establishing kind of what exactly that art will be, but, so we'll be able to unveil more information about that as it goes. So the, really what the Planning Commission is being asked to do tonight is make, ultimately make a recommendation on this to City Council. They can approve, recommend approval or denial, and can add any conditions to ensure that this project meets the provisions of the code and that it does not negatively impact adjacent properties. We don't have a motion or decision is not going to be made tonight on this, so at the next Planning Commission meeting, what you'll see in the meeting packet is a motion, and that's all going to be contingent on the discussion tonight, and potentially some conditions that would go along with that. One thing that I noted in an email to the Planning Commissioners, that maybe, in this case, considering we have a concept plan, that this is, plan is conceptual to this point, we're still kind of going through the input process, that it may be appropriate to, when, when making a recommendation, to have the recommendation conditioned on kind of a final set of plans that would be submitted to, could be to my office for, that would, because really, there's going to be two things. We're going to have a final site plan that will have more of a, kind of more of a traditional plan like you would see with a development project, but also, we'll need a plan that would be for actual construction that would be used to bid out this project, and that's expected to happen later next year. So it may be, we aren't going to have a final concept plan by, or a final plan by next, by the next meeting. And really, this is kind of a work in progress. So I could envision, and certainly it's up for discussion and consideration, a condition that would allow us to have that flexibility and maybe come back with a final, to show a final plan, or have the city submit a final plan to my office that includes the elements that, kind of what the final plan has. So something to consider. That's the end of my report. I'm certainly be able to answer questions. As I noted, we have members from our project team that are here. We have the consultant team that drafted the concept plan, that can share more information about that. We have our Parks Director to talk more about the project, the park, kind of the activities in the park, and anything else you might need to learn more about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Menzner?
I have a question.
Commissioner Williams.
I certainly understand that this is a concept plan. I also noted that in your report, Peter, that there weren't really any major changes to it that were contemplated moving forward. So that makes me think that the scope of this project, as it was probably presented to the consulting team, is probably driving what we're seeing here today. So I noticed there were several references to events and performance space, but when I actually look at the plan, what I see is public art slash performance space. I'm really interested in how that moves forward, and I guess my question is, what was the scope for that particular component of the plan as it was presented to the consultant team for development? What was in scope in particular? What was contemplated or desired? Kind of performances? What size? I noticed there's no covered space. Can you speak to that?
I can speak generally, and certainly members of the project team, if you want to chime in, we'd encourage that. But the, I think generally, the scope is we want to have a performance space in the park. The, it's, at this point, the concept plan is flexible into, as to where, how that happens and where it goes. I recognize there's no covered space for performance right now. That's something we've gotten feedback on from other places. But there's a small area identified for that, but in terms of how that will manifest at this point, we're just not quite sure yet. But it's certainly a desired element of the future in, for this phase of the project.
So if I'm understanding your answer correctly, there really wasn't any specificity in terms of the scope of that sort of part of the project as it was developed?
Yeah, not for a performance space yet.
Kind of a hope and a dream more than anything specific?
Well, it's certainly, yeah, it's certainly a desire, but in terms of details, we don't have that yet.
All right.
Other questions for Mr. Menzner? All right then. Stick close, I know you will. And if the applicant team has anything they'd like to add, certainly invite you to come forward now.
Good evening. My name is Tom Fierbach. I'm the Director of Planning, Building, and Development for the city. I think Mr. Menzner did a, did a great job of giving you kind of the overview of kind of where we're at at the moment. We are really just here to listen and to hear your perspectives and to hear from the public tonight, and certainly are available to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Mr. Fierbach?
Yeah, two. One, following up about the performance area, a more specific question, looking at the plan, the area, or looking at the 3D rendering more, looking at that, it doesn't look like a stage. It looks like there's a piece of art there, even though the plan view shows it to be a stage. It doesn't look like there's any way you could have a performance there.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think like Mr. Menzner mentioned, it's, it's essentially a concept plan at this, at this point. You know, our, our challenge was to admittedly take the opportunity of this, this grant and, and try to come up with a proposal that we thought had a, had a great amount of support in the community in terms of the main thrust, the, the covered market for, for the farmer's market and, and every other type of activity that can be imagined to, to happen there with community support. The, the rehabilitation of the Board of Water and Light Building, all these, we, we have heard from the public over the years, we know there's a lot of support for that in the community, and also, they hit some major milestones for the grant opportunity. So that was really the main thrust of, of our proposal, and I think the, the remainder of the details, we really need to work together to iron out with, with various commissions, with the public. That is our intent. And ultimately, the, the direction to our, to our very capable folks from Veritas and from Meat was to plan this as kind of a phase one, to allow for as much flexibility in future phases of the, the park and the surrounding areas planning. Because as you may recall, we were, we were engaged in an effort to do, do some long-term planning of this whole area, and that is, we were at the doorstep of that when we found out about this grant opportunity. So, so again, the, the main thrust here is to try to really leverage this million-dollar grant to do something that's transformational and is, has broad support in the community, but to do it in such a way that really allows as much flexibility for the future planning of this area, which as soon as this project is sort of underway, we will begin that effort.
Okay. And then a question about the parking. The staff report shows two areas, a total of 29 parking spaces that are going to go away. They're there now, and it says they are reserved for use by the Valley Court Community Center. So does this mean we're going to stop the activities that are in the Valley Court Community Center, or how will they do without that reserved parking?
I think that's definitely a consideration we need to work through. We, we have a lease with the Alpha folks for at least another two years, and, you know, obviously, that's a very important service that they provide to the community. At the same token, it's also a building that is very near the end of its useful life, so we've been involved in conversations for multiple, multiple weeks and months with that group about what is the future and whether it, it can continue in that space, or whether we need to try to work together to find a different venue for that activity to happen. And ultimately, I would say, that's probably part of the second phase. So in the short term, I think we'd have to, you know, consider that use is continuing for at least some period of time, and, and I think that parking goes part and parcel with that.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Wagner.
I have a follow-up question about parking. I was just, I understand that we're removing spaces, and it's always, you know, challenging to figure out. I go to the market a lot, it's hard to find a park, place to park. I was surprised, though, to see that this initial plan, I mean, we're going to be paving over green space in the park to put more cars in, which, I mean, I'm, I'm just surprised. I understand you need rows for the vendors, but I've, I've never seen more than one or two food trucks, and to have space for five or 15 seems a little grand. I mean, can you talk about the paving over this space for?
Sure. I mean, I think, you know, I think that's part of the concept that frankly, we've had a lot of discussions about the appropriateness of that, and, and I think that's, you know, we've definitely heard some feedback from members of the public regarding that. So finding the right balance between, you know, activating the, the farm market and envisioning the other types of activities that can happen versus, you know, providing for open space is definitely a balance that we need to strike here. You know, it's, parking is, is the most emotionally charged issue of, of all of our planning endeavors, as I'm sure you know. What's, you know, frustrating from a planning perspective is that we have 3,200 spaces within the three, four-block radius. They're in structured parking, and, you know, ultimately, you know, I think we, we do need to continue our efforts to try to change the culture in East Lansing around using structured parking, because it is, you know, from a planning perspective, a lot better use of, of property than a surface lot. But that said, you know, I, I've been on record before saying I think that the future of the west side of Abbott needs to involve some additional parking, especially as we densify the area, especially as we look to kind of additional development activities. So whether that's, you know, ultimately, we're never going to solve parking. Every successful downtown has a parking and a traffic problem, but I think we can, we can incrementally make things better, potentially with this project, and potentially also with future redevelopment that happens in this area. Again, I think it'd also be a big part of our conversation. it'll also be a big part of our conversation in the Phase Two planning effort. And always.
Commissioner Williams?
I really just wanted to ask that the consulting team be introduced. I'd appreciate that. Do they have a prior relationship with the city? If so, what work have they done for us before? Have they done other similar projects elsewhere? And if so, where? I'd just appreciate that.
Sure, sure. Maybe I'd bring up either Kathy or Matt. So we definitely have a longstanding relationship in terms of both Veritas and MEAT, but most of the projects that they do are in the parks. So I'm going to pass this over to them to give you a better kind of introduction. And sorry for not thinking to do that earlier.
Hi, good evening. I'm Matt McGaughy. I'm the President of MEAT Group Architects, and we've done a lot of work with the city. Actually, this room, we were part of the renovation of this room and other spaces in the community center here. Most recently, we worked on a patriarch park project, utilizing those grant funds to upgrade the pavilion there and update the restrooms and add the additional, kind of update the restrooms over by the pickleball courts. Outside of that, we've done miscellaneous other studies at the Bailey Community Center and other things in the past. We've done work. We're currently underway, about to get under construction with the fire station number one renovation project there. And like I said, we've done a fair number of projects here in this building too. So worked for the Parks Department and the folks at City Hall as well, done renovations there. And we've partnered with Veritas Design Group on a number of projects. They are the landscape architects on this, and so they'll have more significant experience in farmer's markets or park redevelopment-type projects. And I'll let Trevor from Veritas introduce himself.
Thanks, Matt. I'm Trevor Bosworth. I'm a Principal at Veritas Design Group. We're based in Kalamazoo in Grand Rapids. I am an MSU grad, '97. Previous work that we've done with the city of East Lansing, so we were involved in the bigger pictures, which was the comprehensive land use study that was done five years ago with the planning staff. We've also written the urban design guidelines, which was probably three or four years ago, which really set the stage for all things happening within the public realm in the city. And the city's done some really nice things with their streetscapes in the last five years. We've done park work here within the city as well. We also work with Michigan State. We do a lot of their land planning, a lot of their site works. We're very familiar with this city, with the people here. And that long engagement process that we went through, specifically, you know, with the bigger picture, that comprehensive plan, gave us a very good understanding, I think, of, you know, where the city is moving forward at and what are the things that are important to people. And certainly, you know, keeping green space, enhancing green space, activating special places like Valley Court Park, which are near to the downtown, was why we were really interested in this process and this project when they asked us to come on board. So we're glad to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Bowman and Commissioners. I'm Kathy DeChambeau. I'm the Director of Parks, Recreation and Arts. Happy to answer any questions. Additionally, I do want to point out that the site plan is missing a few things that we consider amenities that we'll consider mandatory. Bike parking is one of those. As someone who almost never goes to the farmer's market other than on my bike, it's really important. We also have that lovely bike maintenance station that we installed a few years ago. We wouldn't want to lose that either. That's really important to that area. The ability to have entertainment and have a covered area for those entertainers is integral to the farmer's market, and we recognize that. We're not looking to lose amenities that people really look forward to at the farmer's market. I, for one, would be very disappointed if I went to the farmer's market and didn't get to enjoy the music and the entertainment. And part of this extension of having this permanent structure is the ability to do even more of that. So there are those things I just want to point out, and you will probably point out more to us that we consider mandatory as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Thanks. Yeah, I think this is an exciting project. I look forward to following this as it moves forward. I'm glad to hear that the conversation is resolving around phases. In reading the communication from the public, I thought that there was a lot of good ideas in there, but, you know, my understanding is that we have limited resources with the grant that we can work with, and I view this as kind of the centerpiece of future projects for this part of the city, which of course I live just a few blocks north of. But, you know, things like a better north path leading down into the park, I think, is important. And I understand that's likely to be a part of some sort of future project, but as somebody with three small kids, a stroller's pretty tough to get down into the park. So that's something I'd certainly like to see at some point. But other things like a potential ice rink, a dog park, I think while they're good ideas, I don't envision those as being part of this particular project that's before us. And then going back to the discussion about the performance space, so, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but as it is now, the BWL building is used for some sort of larger performances that happen in the park, and then the space just south of where the vendors are for the farmer's market is kind of more for musicians. Is the plan to kind of merge those spaces or to keep those as two separate spaces? What's the intended use of the BWL building? Will that sort of maintain the same use under this plan?
I'll answer. So I don't think we've been having events in the BWL building, right?
Not inside.
Around the building.
Yeah, yeah, right. Like music and...
So, yeah, for now, it's really just buttoning that building up so that we can store things and keep them dry. In future phases, I mean, really, we've talked about all kinds of things from making it available to some sort of seasonal vendor, like an ice cream shop or something. Again, don't hold me to this, but these are kind of the conversations that have been happening in a future phase. But certainly taking advantage of the space and enhancing it, but nothing pinned down right now.
Okay. And then just a few more small things too. Just my two cents on parking. I also am a big proponent for expanding more parking west of Abbott, potentially with something along the lines of a ramp somewhere along there, I think would be really useful for that part of the city. And in my mind, I kind of equate additional parking here with additional customers, right? Like, I think that that's something that you need for the farmer's market to make it more accessible to potentially people that don't live in our community right near the farmer's market. Not everybody is in close enough proximity to bike or walk. And I do think some parking spaces are needed. Is the intent to have those parking spaces to the east there, kind of along the green space, open and available while the farmer's market is in operation?
As of now, that's the thought, is they would be open for the farmer's market. We've already had questions about how they might be used when the farmer's market is not open, and don't have a good answer on that yet, but it's certainly part of the thought process and how that's all going to be programmed.
Okay. And then, but the pedestrian traffic is going to be centered around the interior of that building in the space, right? So you don't envision a scenario where there's pedestrians that are kind of trying to use that as a walk-through while cars are driving in and out? Because I can see you can access that through the north and the south now.
Yeah, we are envisioning the kind of the north through the market, over from Evergreen, basically from the downtown up through Evergreen, up through the market, as being kind of the primary thoroughfare.
Okay. And then just a clarification on the playground structures. It says relocation. Are those to be the same playground structures that are existing in the park now, or new structures?
They're going to be new structures. Yeah, we don't have design or renderings of those yet, but if we have any inspiration, we can share those with the commission.
So and this design has them separated by age group, right, with the two- to five-year-old park?
Yeah.
Okay, interesting. And then lastly, what was the thought behind positioning the basketball court east-west? Typically, you see those as north-south, given issues with the sun. I know that that's how the space is now, but with things like the tennis courts that are in the park as well, those are north-south. So that stood out to me as something I would be in support of.
No, that's a good...
Yeah, I'll make a note of that.
Yeah, please.
It is now, but the tennis courts are north-south.
Just a couple of clarifications there. So the current proposal is actually to move the existing playground. So we are going to do an audit on it since it is existing, but it's relatively new, and the thought is to reuse that equipment and move it over, centrally located within the park.
As opposed to having it isolated.
And then, yeah, the comment on the basketball court, you're exactly right.
Typically, it's north-south.
Currently, the existing court is east-west. So we're essentially looking at cutting off the existing parking in the farmer's market, making that green space and leaving the basketball court as-is.
Oh, it's going to be the same?
Same.
You're just minimizing the footprint of the concrete that's there for the basketball court now?
No, the basketball court would remain, and then the parking spaces north of that would be saw-cut and removed, and that would become green space.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense. And then lastly, you know, I don't envision this being a part of this phase either, but is there any plans for the tennis courts in the future? I noticed that those aren't in the best of shape, and...
Tennis is fun, and I would like to play it there.
Tennis is fun.
Yeah.
And there definitely is. We'll be opening up our five-year planning process this coming year, and there's definitely talk about that in a very soon future phase.
Other questions or comments for the... Commissioner Denal, excuse me. Let's call you doctor.
That's fine, too. So I know stormwater is a notable concern in this neighborhood and in Glen Karin to the west, where I live. And I am concerned about the substantial increase in paved surfaces. And the documentation mentions that there's a consultant exploring native plantings and trees to help mitigate this. But has there been any kind of more substantial environmental review of the site regarding stormwater, or are there other strategies being considered, like permeable pavement to help accommodate more stormwater runoff?
Yeah, thank you. That was a really good question. It was part of the kind of the principles of the project when we first began, and a requirement of the grant is, so typically, currently, Valley Court Park is the low spot, and it receives a lot of stormwater. It's heavily used, so it's heavily compacted. There really aren't any, what we would call, green infrastructure components to the park. And so if you look at the plan, we're looking at different ways of, whether it's taking sheet flow off of the potential new structure or off of any existing or any proposed pavements, and running those through bio swells with native plants. And so, one, that helps to cleanse the stormwater. It helps to slow it down. We will get as much infiltration as we can. We haven't gotten soil borrows yet, so we don't know exactly what the substrate condition is. My guess is it's probably pretty heavy clay. But the intent here is to reduce and create more higher-quality green space within that park. They can also be teaching tools and learning tools for people as well. So, you know, whether, you know, Matt and I will work together, you know, some of this we may look at taking the waters that comes off that building, potentially recapturing that or running that through systems prior to going into the public stormwater store.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions or comments? I have a few myself. Ms. DeChambeau, there's no dog park at Bailey, is there? I saw a lot of the comments from the public that suggested there were, and I think particularly with the removal of the fence in the last couple of years...
No, there is no formal dog park. We do have a proposed project at Stoddard Park, and that may be the confusion, and that will be a mini urban dog run. And so that will be probably coming to you shortly.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just for the general, the consultants generally, you can add my name to the tally of people who are somewhat skeptical about the need for new additional parking or additional paving in what is currently, you know, a green space. And in addition to the parking, is the in-and-out, do there need to be two paths in and out? Do there need to be two paths that, you know, so there's a potential to cut a little bit more of that paving and also cut the likelihood that people are going to use the farmer's market paved area as a cut-through to get from one place to another? That if that could be, if it's not necessary, there's another way to, you made a point of talking about adding to environmental resiliency and sort of allowing that water to percolate naturally certainly would work in that regard. Just generally speaking, are we likely to, is the intention to show this to us at the next version of this, at our November 9th meeting? That's our next meeting?
We will not have a new plan in November 9. Yeah, so hopefully there's not too much pressure. We're not trying to provide non-answers, but I know some of this is just hard because we don't have the answer necessarily yet.
Actually, I think that's the right answer.
Yeah. It's always better to say you don't know, right? So in this case, what we're trying to do is truly use this as a public input process. So there will be a new plan that we could bring back to at a future date. I don't have a firm date on that yet, but we'll huddle after this meeting, and I'll have probably a better answer on generally when that might be at the next meeting.
No, and the reason I ask is that, you know, if the intention is indeed to gather public input, you've done that already, and admirably right. But this body, Historic District Commission, and what I presume are at least one or two people that are currently in attendance this evening are going to want to have some input in that, to turn it around in two weeks. I know you're good. I know you're really good. But if the intention is to take, you know, public input into account, then that's, you know, if there's no deadline regarding grant funding or whatever, that I will look forward to seeing it, but I will look forward to seeing it in a different, perhaps slightly, perhaps significantly different form. And all, I think it looks pretty promising. Yeah. I'm sorry, Commissioner Denal?
Can I just ask one quick question? Is there a plan for a drinking fountain?
I don't see it on here, but is that sort of part of the concept?
Yes.
Okay. That actually reminds me, I like the idea of restrooms being, I mean, we talk about infrastructure, and public restrooms are part of the infrastructure that we tend to overlook. And so I see that those are included in here. That's a great add. Any other comments or questions for the consultants? Commissioner Williams?
I just wanted to say that I think this is an exciting project. I'm a big fan and a regular patron of the farmer's market, and I think this looks really great from that perspective. I'd just add my voice that fewer few trucks, less parking and more performance space, and I'd be really happy.
And piggybacking on that, if the next version of this that we see takes into account the next phase, for instance, you know, if solar panels or if performance space comes part of Phase Two, a note of that would be, I think, helpful to sort of make people feel comfortable that, you know, we're not done yet. This is Phase One. What's Phase Two and Phase Three going to bring? Yeah, I'm sorry, Commissioner Denal?
No, it's a, I just, it just popped in my head.
That's fine.
So you didn't miss me. I just wonder if there's, how much consultation there's been with farmer's market vendors to see that the plan is meeting their expectations for what they need. And then kind of a second question, has there been any consultation with, for instance, the Allen Street Market? I know they just went through a major renovation and I think added or subtracted some parking spaces around, so I wonder if they've received any negative or positive input that y'all are taking into consideration as well?
That's a great question. So we have both a farmer's market advisory committee and the vendors, and so we've been taking vendor input. There's also a formal meeting for both of those together coming up on November 7. And so we'll be presenting to all of them. And then any who can't make that meeting have had ample time to give input as well. Our farmer's market manager, Carla Forrest Hewitt, has been to the Allen Street Market recently and has been talking with them. She also talks frequently with Meridian to, you know, lessons learned. Input is really important. And she recently made a visit to Grand Rapids as part of one of our farm visits that we make yearly, and went to the downtown market there as well and brought back some ideas. So, yes, we've been gathering input from other areas as well. Thank you for that question.
Thank you.
Any other questions to Mr. Menzer, please?
Unless there's any other questions, I just had to comment. Okay, a couple of things I just wanted to note. So this project will be back at your next meeting for potentially a recommendation, and we'll see what the, you know, certainly our team will talk outside of this meeting about what we can bring back and what we can't, and we'll be, you know, transparent with you on that. Also, you'll have the Section 61 review. I took that off this review. So that's, the Michigan Planning Enabling Act requires the planning commission to consider public, basically, capital improvements. So new streets, new parks, new construction projects within parks. For, it's really a review for location character and extent. And we think we talked a little bit about this at the last work session. So that has to go to council, it'll be on council's agenda on the first. They have to refer it to the planning commission. So we'll take that step, and we'll have that back on for the November 9. And then just for the folks, for the commissioners and for the folks here in this room, in addition to the meeting tonight, I mentioned before that there's a Historic District Commission meeting. That'll be November 10. We are having a neighborhood and community input session at the Valley Court Community Center on November 3. It's really going to be kind of an open house. It'll be from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And that, we did send a notice to that same group. So like, the state requires notification within 300 feet. So we're sending, we piggybacked on the set of notices for the Historic District Commission notice that went to neighbors, and we're also engaging with representatives from neighborhood groups to meet in that area. So anyone that's available to stop in between 4:00 and 6:00 at the Valley Court Community Center, and for those of you that haven't been there, it's basically in the park. It's a building that is just on the north side of Hillside Court there, adjacent to the park. So our project team will be there to answer questions, go over basically the same thing that we've been doing. There's also, as... been doing. There's also, as Director DeShambo mentioned, the meeting with the farmer's market vendors, will, will be at city council. And then there's a Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission meeting on November 16. So there's going to be a lot more opportunities for public input. And I'll give another plug for the website at cityvsizing.com/pavilion for input. And then certainly to keep abreast of like new plant, anything that, anything that we're up to is going to go onto that site. Thank you.
Thank you. Any remaining questions for the applicant or for staff? All right. And at this time, I'd like to open up our public hearing regarding this matter. Members of the public who are in attendance this evening now would, gives you your opportunity to come forward and make a comment to the planning commission regarding the proposal that's in front of us. I do have one card from Eleanor Holbrook.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Eleanor Holbrook. I live at 812 Lantry Hill Drive. I really want to congratulate everybody who's been involved in this project. It just really is a fabulous use of our public space. I love the fact that we will have a permanent market there and the use of the old building and so on. It's really wonderful. So the issue I was going to raise has already been raised by a number of people. And that is that during the discussion with art space, I was on the core group and so was Chair Bowman. And there was discussion of a, a performance arts, either, either an amphitheater or a band shell or some space for performance arts. And we talked specifically about the East Lansing Jazz Festival and what a wonderful place that would be for them to be able to perform. It would be a permanent home for them. So I'm glad to see that you're, you're looking at that as, at the possibility. The other thing that occurred to me is the East Lansing Film Festival is not in East Lansing and you all know that. It does not reside here, but it is our film festival. So in the summer, that performance space could be used for films. And as I understand it, the MSU Federal Credit Union will have an auditorium. We have a great auditorium here at the Hana. And there are other spaces too for the film festival when they have their, their winter series. So I personally would like to see them come back here so that they're really part of us and maybe enhance what's happening there. But again, congratulations. I think it's great. I'll leave you all to work out the parking and all the other environmental concerns and so on that go along with this. But it is just a great idea and I look forward to helping if I can and, and thinking more about this. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holbrook. Please, if you could just leave the card up at the desk there, if you'd just let us know your name and, and spell your name on the card so that we can have that for the minutes, please?
Yeah, my name is Douglas Heilmann. I live at 1417 Farwood Drive. I love the idea of the improved farmer's market down in Valley Court. I use Valley Court frequently. I have some real issues with the plan. I think that having the plan shown the way it has been on, on the website, showing just those improvement areas is very misleading. It doesn't show it in conjunction with the entire park. The actual new design is located right in the middle of the park. It does nothing to enhance any green space. People have been saying they, they, they're, they want to enhance the green space. It doesn't do that at all. It builds a great big parking lot in the middle of the park with a pavilion in the middle of that. I have concerns about what the pavilion's use is going to be, what the hours of the farmer's market is going to be, who is going to be privy to using the pavilion when the market's not open. I have questions about parking, about the, the permit parking that all along Valley Court Drive up, up against the park, which has been a, a barrier to use of the park for years. You can't just pull up and park and go into the park. You've, it's been years since you've been able to do that. And I don't know if those use, those spots are still going to be permit parking only, or if they're going to be opened up to the public. Are those, are the parking spots along Valley Court Park going to have meters? Or is it going to be free parking so people can use the park? Is this about people using the farmer's market or about people using the park? I've been to the farmer's market many times. There, I've never been there when it's real crowded. I don't know where you think all these people are all of a sudden going to come. And, and to the middle of the green space. It's, I, I see it as a commercial endeavor for the city to make some money, to rent some spaces, to rent spaces for the trucks. I, 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 I think that there is an answer. I think it needs to be scaled down. I think it needs to be moved to one end of the park so that the rest of the park maintains a green space. The, the million dollars that needs to be spent, there's drainage issues, there's the condition of the road, the alley around the back of the park, the condition of the, the horrible looking guardrails that go around the park. It makes it look real ratty. That whole backside of the park looks ratty. There's lots of improvements that can be made that money can be spent on. It doesn't all have to be blown on phase one of, of.
What?
What are the other phases? There, this, putting this right in the middle of the park is going to eliminate so many options in the future for the later phases. I think it's a big mistake. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other?
Hi, Alice Dregger from 621 Sunset Lane. I've lived a block north of this park for 20 something years. And I was hoping the city was going to engage the Oakwood neighborhood and the West Village residents directly, but that hasn't happened yet. I agree with Commissioner Williams that this is very exciting. You know, that fewer food trucks seems good, less parking seems good, more performance space would be great. But mostly I want to say to you, this is a really exceptional opportunity and whatever is done here is not going to be able to be undone. This is our last open green space downtown. The Oakwood neighborhood is a very dense neighborhood. It was built that way in the 1920s. So it is not like other neighborhoods where there's big open spaces. This is our big open space. And this is the West Village's big open space. And it's the big open space for all the people who live downtown. One of the things I love about this park is how it's used. It's used by the kids at the People's Church Preschool. It's used by the young college students who live all around us who go there and play frisbee. They put up hammocks. They play soccer. They play silly games. It's a wonderful place where we have the melding of the young people and those of us who are older and little kids as well. It's a rare intergenerational space. And it's a gem in that way. It may, I agree, it looks ratty in various ways and I'm excited about the idea of improving it. I think that's really great. But we have to get this exactly right because we're not going to be able to undo it once it's done. So people have already mentioned the path from the north. We've lost the path from the north. That's been a really huge loss for the neighborhood. It also means a loss for the people who have been parking up in our neighborhood, which we're absolutely fine with. We always tell people, come park in our neighborhood to go use downtown because it's free and it's there. And people can't as easily park up there and go down to the park because that path has been lost. So I think being able to provide that parking space in our neighborhood and you have that path down there is really critical. But it's also critical for people who bike and take children and all the rest of it. Folks mentioned stormwater. I happen to know the history of this park really well because I've researched it. And it is indeed, it was a park because it wasn't usable for a building. That's why it was a park. It's the bottom of the moraine. That hill is a moraine. It's a glacial moraine. And the water comes down there. So stormwater is going to need to be a serious consideration because there has been flooding issues down south of that spot. I'm really disturbed at the idea of paving over more of the green space, especially because I know what's going to happen. The city is going to say, we have to take out the big trees in various places. And when the city takes out big trees, they put in small trees. That's going to radically change the character of this park. And so the less you can do that, the better off we will be. A park that has big, beautiful ancient trees feels very different from a park that has little tiny pear polite trees. And this is a space that is now competing with tall buildings all around it. It needs to have big trees to compete with that. I'm not saying it should be a forest, but I think it's really important that we think about the tree loss that we're looking at. A performance space, my God, we've all wanted one so badly, right? We lost the folk festival. We have the jazz festival. We, I think so many of us dream of that park as having a true performance space, a stage, especially an amphitheater, as something covered, maybe not an amphitheater, but a covered space for our musicians that we can go and sit on the lawn again. Remember when we all sat on the lawn together and were at concerts there? I would love to have that back again. That was such, again, a beautiful intergenerational thing that we had all together. And it was so important for community. It really was so important. So if there's any chance of doing that, if you put a big giant pavilion in the park, that's going to take that away. Unless somehow, maybe there's a way to make the pavilion into that performance space. Maybe that pavilion could be made in a way that it is the performance space, right? So that we're not just building this giant thing for four hours a week. Because that's all the market is. It's four hours a week. It might get extended, but it's only ever going to be a few hours a week. Do we need to spend a giant piece of paving and heavy construction for that few hours a week? If we do that, could we at least think of a way to turn it into a performance space as well? The BWL building was a mistake. It's cute. It was nice that they moved it from the hill. It was on a hill, got moved as part of the West Village project, came down. It's been a costly problem ever since. I am one who believes it is time to admit that was a mistake and get rid of it. It is very cute. It does nothing for us. It can't be used because it's ADA inaccessible. It has various contamination problems, as I understand it. That's why it's only ever been used for storage. I previously had argued to the DDA it should be turned into a garden folly. That in fact, it should be stabilized. The roof should be taken off and it should be just turned into a beautiful folly. Garden follies are a thing, especially in England. And then put a community garden around it, right? Allow there to be a community garden space around that thing and just let it be walls. Just, let's, let's take it down to sort of a cute structure and just give up on trying to save that building. And I love the idea of potentially community gardens because we do have people of different ages who live in that area. And if there's any chance of doing something like that, I think it would be pretty wonderful. I love going to cities where I come upon a community garden that has herbs all over the place with signs that say, take, take the herbs, right? And you could just run down and take a little basil and take a little rosemary and take a little whatever. But I hope we can keep as much of that space open and available for the intergenerational wonderfulness that there is. And much as I love the farmer's market and every, every week you'll see me running down to the farmer's market when I'm in town with my big basket and going and getting stuff and talking to the farmers and getting my stuff. But I have to say, I don't think we should change the whole park for just the farmer's market for hours a week. It, it's too precious a space. It's incredibly precious space. We are losing land all over the place and it is our last place to be together in the open, in the outside. And we learned from COVID how important it is for us to have outdoor space together. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that would like to come forward and make comments regarding this application? I'm seeing none. I do, so I'll close the public hearing. And I do want to reiterate that, that the next time this comes before the planning commission, we won't be taking public comments verbally, but we'll certainly take them written. And of course, city council will continue to take verbal comments as will the Historic District Commission and the other boards and commissions that are going to be reviewing this project. Mr. Menzer?
Yeah, and I'll note that the communications received so far will continue, kind of, will follow this project as it goes. So anything we've received today will continue to be part, will all be transferred to the Historic District Commission, any other groups that this project goes before, as well as city council. So if you've already sent a letter in, rest assured that that will stay with this and make its way to council.
Thank you. That will move us on to item 6.2, the consideration of the special use permit to establish adult use marijuana retail facility at 2040 Merritt Road. Welcome. Here's Ben Winkle.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello. I'm Taylor Ben Winkle. I'm an associate planner here at the city. And I'll be going over the special use permit staff report for 2040 Merritt Road. So a special use permit application was submitted by Green Care Group LLC to establish an adult use marijuana retail facility at 2040 Merritt Road. The subject parcel is 0.78 acres and zoned B2, which is retail sales business district. It is located in one of our four provision center overlay zones in the city. It's hemmed in by. Merritt Road to the north and Park Lake Road to the east. To give us some context about where this is located, it's located west of Costco. You might have seen some construction in the area, beginning in June of this year. The facility itself is 7,000 square feet, single story retail facility. Half of it is allocated for the adult use and medical use marijuana sales. And the other half is allocated for lease to retailers. So it's multi-tenant in nature. The larger parcel, the parcel itself is actually a third of a larger parcel, a 6.42 acre parcel that was divided in November of 2021. And this is lot one of those three parcels that were derived from that lot division. So in 2019, city council, city council granted site plan and special use permit approval to construct a phased construction plan for three buildings, a 7,000 square foot provisioning center met for medical marijuana, a four-story hotel, and an 8,700 square foot retail strip center with a drive-thru on a larger 6.42 acre parcel. So that was a phased construction plan. The first phase of that plan involves the construction of the medical marijuana provisioning center, the art sculpture installation, eight feet wide sidewalks along Merritt Road and Park Lake Road, and a connecting five-foot wide sidewalk from the entrance of the provisioning center to those eight-foot wide sidewalks around the outside of the, of the property. And then as well as an internal roadway with entrances, entrances on Merritt Road and Park Lake Road, which is connected to the surface parking lot surrounding the provisioning center. That'll provide 35 parking spaces, which is in excess of the required 24 parking spaces due to the, which is derived from the size of the building and the use, which is general retail. So for a special use permit, review subject to general special use permit standards. Some of the proposed use, use is, is consistent with the purpose of the use in the district. It is a B2, which is general retail. And then it's also the provision, one of our four provision centers, provision center overlay zones, which allows for adult use retail of adult use marijuana and medical use marijuana. The site plan was approved originally in 2019. It's consistent with the character of the neighborhood or the area. It's not necessarily a neighborhood. The traffic in 2019, the traffic studies were determined that the development would not increase traffic to a detrimental amount. The nuisances, generating excessive noise, light, glare, odors and things like that was, was a condition that was considered in the, or was included in the 2019 city council approval. And it will be added as this one, should it be recommended for approval by this body. The proposed development is not, is not anticipated to diminish the economic value of the surrounding properties. And there's no significant impacts that are anticipated to privacy, safety, security, or the enjoyment of the surrounding area. The property is located along a major street, Merritt Road. Park Lake Road is not considered a major, a major street in our master plan. Medical marijuana, or actually marijuana in general, marijuana retail establishments are subject to specials, special, special use criteria. So all of these that are located in the, in the staff report were also included in the 2019 site, site plan and special use permit for the medical, medical marijuana use special use permit in 2019. So all of those can also be included, should this be recommended for approval as well. However, there are some to highlight that are really important to look at, those being the nearest school or school-like place, daycare centers, programs for after-school care, things like that, is located about 2,500, 2,500 feet from the subject parcel. And that's McDonald School to the northwest. The current property is B2 zoning district and, and it's within the overlay zone for provisioning centers. Neither of those allow for the cultivation of commercial, the commercial cultivation of marijuana. So not only is this special use permit not allowing the cultivation of marijuana, the district itself and the overlay zone don't allow them either. The nearest provisioning center within this. The nearest provisioning center within this, um, overlay zone is to the south, seven hundred feet. Um, it's Pleasant Trees located at nineteen fifty Merritt Road. And the minimum distance, uh, between two dispensaries is five hundred feet in our ordinance, and so it's in excess of that. Uh, the operating hours are between eight PM and nine PM, seven days a week, which is the max allowed by our ordinance. All right. So, um, the planning commission has the opportunity to, um, may, um, recommend reasonable conditions or certain modifications to the proposal, of course. And any deliberation done tonight will be, um, contained within a reflection that will be, um, included at a later date. This SUP permit will be, uh, this SUP will be, um, included in the November, um, I believe ninth, um, meeting. Um, it'll become for you for action then. So what questions can I answer for you now?
Any questions for Ms. Van Winkle? Sorry, Vice Chair Sullivan.
Thanks, Taylor. Um, what is the status of the, the next phases of this project? Have they made any progress with the hotel or the other building on the site?
So, um, in December of twenty twenty-one, there was a letter agreement that, uh, set timeline, a strict timeline on the development of the phases. The second, second and third phases being the hotel and the retail strip center. Um, the letter agreement dictates that each subsequent phase cannot begin unless the one before it has been initiated, um, at a set date. The date to initiate the second phase was September first, and that passed without the initiation of a building permit. Um, so that means that, um, it, those approvals for the second and third phase have expired, um, due to that letter agreement and the phases set and both parties agreed to. Meaning that they can come back, submit for an application and receive approval or, um, recommendation, uh, again for those phases, but they must return to, um, for deliberation. And approval.
Thank you. Other questions for staff? Thank you. Is the applicant here today?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, members of the planning commission. My name's Andy Andre from Avanti Development Group. Uh, I'm here on behalf of the applicant Green Cure Group. And, um, I think Taylor did a really good job at summarizing the, um, the conditions that we put as part of the application for the general, uh, SUP standards, the additional standards when it came to the marijuana establishments. And then, as she said, the extra, extra, the additional specific use standards when it comes to the marijuana establishments and, and how our plan and the application meets those requirements. Along with, uh, the conditions that she had mentioned that were similar to the twenty nineteen, uh, city council for the medical, uh, for the medical request at that time. So for, uh, members of the planning commission that, um, that may be, uh, going back a little bit of time, recouping, recouping some of the memory of the project, I'd like to just touch base on that. So again, going back to twenty nineteen, uh, we, we looked at this phased approach to it. Uh, it took a little bit of time to get started. Uh, we did get started, worked with, uh, staff quite a bit. In order to come up with the, I think, a very good and accurate phasing plan. The initial phase, as, uh, Taylor had mentioned, was the seven thousand square foot building, the access, major utilities for the majority of the property. As well as the, um, public art, uh, component of the project, as well as the pathways that run along both, um, Park Lake and Merritt. So those are all as part of, uh, part of that initial phase. And if you've gone by, you can see we're under construction right now. And, um, as, as we're continuing on, uh, the, the building, the structure is up, the roof is on. Uh, the utilities, probably ninety-five percent of the utilities are installed, light poles are going to start going up. So we're going to start seeing a little bit more vertical and, um, hopefully with, uh, with, uh, some cooperation with the weather, we can, uh, be paving in about three weeks. So we'll see quite a bit of a transformation, uh, on the property. And, um, when, when it comes to the, the phasing, uh, let me touch on that a little bit. So I think a very specific phasing plan was submitted in conjunction with that letter agreement. What we, what we saw as we initiated construction on the first, uh, first phase, it was, it was kind of a wooded area, heavily wooded. And as we start to bring that down and we started to increase the visibility of that corner, we, we had some interest that came in, some interest to say, uh, for phase two for the retail. I think as, as things have gone on with the, um, with the way the cost of development is right now and the cost of construction and with the interest rates where they're at, we saw kind of a stall in that. Um, so the decision would be, do we want to build a speculative building with the potential to try and lease it out? Or do we want to be a little bit more, um, forethought into what is actually going to go there as to, you know, something specific to a use? And so I think, uh, you know, as Taylor had mentioned, uh, the, the time expired and we're, we're totally, uh, fine. And I think in agreement that it would be best to come back, uh, subsequently for phase two and incorporate that as a, as part of a, uh, separate submittal at a later date. I think that's, I think that's wholly appropriate. I think that gives, instead of us just trying to rush a project through in order to meet the requirement. It's, gives us a little bit more opportunity to be thoughtful of, of, uh, what's going there and how it's going to go there and what's the best long-term use on that. So, uh, I'm, I'm glad that was brought up and, and that would be something, um, that, that we're wholly in agreeance with. So, um, we've, we've worked diligently with the, uh, the planning, building and development group, uh, staff, engineering, as well as the building. Trying to move this project along and, and hopefully within several months will be, will be completed. Uh, we, we scheduled to pour the building slab in the concrete, uh, next week. So we'll really see some transformation at the location. So as, as we're continuing on, we'd ask for, uh, recommendation at the appropriate time from planning commission for the special use for the, uh, for the adult use. With the, with all the conditions, I think, that are similar in nature to the twenty nineteen city council, um, for the medical. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Andre?
When do you anticipate, uh, opening?
That's a great question. I think as soon as we're done. Um, no, so we have, that's, that's a great question. So that, I think our critical path right now is getting everything paved. We'll be able to be working inside the building. Our, our first initial push was to get it enclosed so that we can work inside the building. We can get the slab done. So I'd say it's, you know, we're within about four months or so.
When you do open, well, right now, you basically have the entire site down to bare dirt.
Right.
Pretty much. When you do open, what are your plans for lot two and lot three? Are they going to stay as bare dirt or are you going to do something more to make it more of an attractive site or?
Right. That's a, that's a very good question. So, uh, on a regular basis, we're in communication with the engineering when it comes to the soil erosion. Just got a call on that today. We've, we discussed what our plan is and that stable, we will, we're getting that paving, getting everything ready. We have some stockpiles that we have to get rid of and we'll look at stabilizing everything that's been disturbed. So we, we will stabilize everything, um, seed, mulch and everything, even though it's going to be a temporary, we still do it as a temporary means and, and, uh, we're, uh, we're, we're fully aware of that and in agreeance with that. And that's the plan that we've worked out with soil erosion as well.
Okay. It was obvious that the site has a, a grade change, so erosion is definitely something to worry about.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Thanks.
Other questions for Mr. Andre? Vice Chair?
Yes, since you're up there, just, uh, to piggyback off of my previous question about the, uh, the phases. So you didn't mention the hotel. Is there still any plan to move forward with the hotel on one of those lots? Or is it just the former speculative retail
Right.
building and the marijuana
That's a good question. So I, I just focused in on the phase two because that's the most imminent, you know, coming up. So the intent is still the hotel. So we've already done, we've already extended the utilities to that location and we've kind of, uh, phased it that way. Uh, but our, but our immediate focus is on what's next and really the, the, the most, um, I think the most viable is, is that retail. And, and the retail is good. We, and we did get very good interest. I think it's just a pause right now. And so I think that'll rekindle up and then we'll move on that and then we'll turn our attention, uh, to the hotel.
Okay. So just to clarify, your intent is to then find some potential tenants for the retail building, build that building to completion and then start the hotel afterward?
I think, I think that what our initial approach was when, when we started construction, like I said, we got a lot of initial, um, questioning, how are things looking? And, and, um, but I think as we never have a definitive, we never had a purchase agreement in place. And so the question comes up, do you build it and they will come? Or do you get a tenant, have something more, you know, tangible in hand? And then we, then we can certainly move forward and construct it. And so I think that's, again, I think that's what's in our best interest. I think that was in the, in the best interest of the city. We don't want a vacant building. We don't want that to be an eyesore, especially on that corner being such a visible corner. And so I think we've probably taken a little bit, you know, more of a measured approach with that. And then, as I mentioned, then we'll turn our, our attention over to phase three.
Thank you. Other questions for the applicant? Thank you. If you'd just stick close, I'll open up the public hearing and invite members of the public who, uh, have comments to make on this, um, application to come forward now and do so. I'm seeing no one come forward and I forgot to check before, but it looks like there's nobody in our queue. So appreciate you're always keeping me honest. Um, so that being the case, I'll close the public hearing and we'll see this at our next meeting. Thank you. We have no old business, but we have one item of new business, um, the adoption of the two thousand twenty-three planning commission meeting schedule.
I don't have anything to add. So there's a member, uh, meeting, proposed meeting schedule, it follows the same, um, schedule that you're typically used to. It avoids holidays and it has the same, uh, just November, one meeting in November and December. So there's a motion to adopt that schedule, knowing that we can always change it along the way. Uh, the plan is to keep the meetings, at least for council and the planning commission here in this room. So moving forward.
I was wondering about that on the walk here today. Thank you.
Yeah.
Questions for Mr. Menzer? Somebody care to make a motion then? Just at the bottom of the I can do it. Thank you.
Uh, I make a motion to move to adopt the twenty twenty-three planning commission meeting schedule, um, as in our agenda packet.
Thank you. Is there a second? It's been moved by, um, Vice Chair Sullivan and seconded by Commissioner Hendricks. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. And those opposed, that motion carries. Are there any commissioner concerns this evening? Commissioner Williams?
It's maybe less of a concern and more of a question or, or request. Um, our conversation about, uh, the vision for Valley Court Park really makes my attention land on that empty lot that we always thought of as building C. Those of us who were on the planning commission back in the DRW Convexy Project went through, that was a lot identified as a low and moderate income housing, uh, location, I believe. I know there've been some twists and turns politically around that. I don't know all the ins and outs of that. But as we, as we think about Valley Court Park is, what is the status of that property? Um, is that at all in play as we think about the vision for that part of the city and what our options might be? I'm not asking you to respond tonight. Maybe we could add that to our conversation next time.
Yeah, I could have a report on that. There are, there is several things to add and to update the county commission on, so I can do that at the next meeting.
Great, thanks.
I, yeah, I can, I saw that there was a, a correspondence for the DDA schedule tomorrow for a potential site plan for that space.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Some of the Evergreen lots and some of the, and the Dublin property. So it's on the, uh, East Lansing website on the DDA agenda for tomorrow's meeting.
Did you say Dublin property?
Yes.
Yeah. What I would add on that is that's, that's a developer that is looking, um, it's a, so not an official project. It's something that a developer is going to the DDA to, to share a vision for the properties, but it's nothing that has, has an application or that's going through any process. It's kind of a speculative project at this point.
Thank you. Any other concerns? Then a motion to adjourn would be in order. It's been moved by Commissioner Williams and seconded by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. And those opposed, we are adjourned at eight twenty-five. Thank you, everyone. Be safe.